It's called order. The work session for Monday, August 18th, we're meeting the supervisors here in my Melody Lane. The order to addition any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. Any item listed is open for discussion. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. Meeting presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached versions on the website. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or via remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams. Or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors. And public comments will not be taken. Roll call District One.
Cosby is here.
District Two.
Gomez is here.
And District Three, Anthony is here. All supervisors are present and in person today. We are going to be discussing possible direction regarding the health and detention medical director position that is up for grabs. So I'll go to Sharon to start us out.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Megan Kennedy here today. She's our Director of Detention Health at the jail. And Barb Lang is the Health Director. She's on teams. So if you have questions. But I asked them here today to share with the Board of Supervisors the statutory and regulatory duties of a Cochise County Medical Director. So we do have the Medical Director contract out for bid right now through our procurement. I believe it closes August 22nd. So once we have it closed, staff will review those qualifications and make a recommendation to the board for a new contract. Our current Medical Director through A V Med, his name is Dr. McLaughlin. He works for A V Med. They gave their notice of termination on August 1st. So it'll end, that contract will end in early September.
So early September, like December 1st?
September 1st, yeah.
Okay, cool.
And so I'll hand it over to Megan.
All right. Thank you, guys, for having us through today to speak. And Barb will weigh in on a couple of the slides. We have very few slides. But our purpose in being here today is just to present clear fact-based information regarding the statutory requirements of the position of being a Medical Director for Cochise County. And the first slide that we have is the Cochise County Medical Director. And per the Department of Health and Human Services, a Medical Director is a physician that oversees medical care and others designated care and services for an organization or facility. And it is a statutorily acquired position. We'll get into that a little bit further in a few minutes.
Oh, she was on team. She was on team.
It's a team, I saw you.
My God.
You have a clue.
Turn the party. Okay.
So, like I said, our point today is just to present you guys with the information regarding the statutorily requirements. Statutorily required topics and items. The second slide that we have is, it's very busy. I'm definitely not going to read all of the statute. But this is just a very broad overview of what the Cochise County Medical Director oversees. The Medical Director oversees all these divisions. So Detention Health Services, Clinical Services, Environmental Health, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, and Prevention Promotional Services. So, for example, the things that the Medical Director does for these departments is covering on-call for the onsite provider that is at the Cochise County Jail. So we have an onsite provider who sees inmates on almost daily basis. She's there quite often. And she's required to be on-call for the medical staff within the facility pretty much 24/7. And that's obviously not an easy thing to do. And you don't ever get to take time off. And it's real busy. You could be getting calls, you know, late in the night, early in the morning.
Most of the time, you're given a scope of practice and protocol to follow.
You still have to get orders for a lot of different things.
Really? So even, Sue, I don't want to make the comparison, but don't give a... So when I was a paramedic, or an SF medic, either one, I was granted a scope of practice that I was allowed to do without calling Dr. May I and getting doctor's permission. It was just standard established protocols that were approved by a physician that said, okay, you guys are allowed to do X, Y, Z. But if you go beyond that, you got to call me and get permission. So do they have those right now for you where your team is allowed to do certain things up until a point and then they got to call? Or you got to call a doctor every time you treat? Okay, I didn't think so.
Yeah, we do have in a detention.
You'd be driving a doctor nuts if you had to do that.
For sure. In a detention facility, we can't call, they're not called standing orders because we, within a correctional facility, they're called protocols. So per protocol, we're going to go ahead and give these medications if the patient presents with these things. But we have a list of protocols that doesn't allow us to continue medication for individuals that are coming off of the street because that's prescribing without a license. So on each.
Do you have nurse practitioners over there?
Yes.
But they can prescribe?
One, that's the provider.
Oh, she's technically the provider. But then you have the doctor that that nurse practitioner operates under that doctor's license.
Um, yes.
Right, like a P A or a nurse, they have to operate under.
Well, a nurse practitioner can operate independently.
They don't have an attending physician that they have to be licensed under?
They don't have to. A nurse practitioner can have any, no, a P A is different. A physician's assistant is different. But a nurse practitioner can practice independently.
Really? Okay, okay.
So any of the times we have individuals, you know, that are coming in off the streets and they're on any prescription medication. In order for us to continue those medications, we have to get an order to continue those medications. So that's whenever we're reaching out and calling the provider, the nurse practitioner. A lot of the time, she's in the facility, so we can just go back and ask her. But on the weekend, she's not. And so that's when she's on-call. So.
How about the Medical Director? You can call them too, right?
The Medical Director covers on-call for our provider for a week, a week at a time, a minimum out of that month so that our provider can have some relief.
Okay.
So we have an on-call provider. And it varies between our nurse practitioner and the Medical Director.
Got you, got you.
And then the Medical Director also provides oversight for TV testing and treatment within this county overview and review of treatment and infectious and non-diseases oversight and regulatory lab requirement.
Okay.
But that comes only to you, right?
Yeah.
You're right now the jail, you're the jails, that would be detention and clinical services is what?
Well, it's just detention.
Just detention, okay.
And I would say just really quickly that we share the nurse practitioner. So we receive the nurse practitioner into the Public Health Department nine hours per week. And then the rest of her time is spent back at the jail detention services.
And how much time is that? Like it's a, is it a four hours a week?
Nine hours a week.
Four hours, so nine hours with you guys and the rest, what is that, 31?
Right.
Okay. I'm going to move on to slide number three. This is going to be your part.
Okay, so these are the regulations, the statutory requirements that public health is required to provide per statute. So these are the things during the budget that I talked about are paid through to the general fund, whereas a social services are paid through grants. So pretty basic stuff, infrastructure, and I have the description of each of the statutory requirements, plans, budgets, boards, qualified staff, environmental sanitation, that's in our Environmental Health Department. So any kind of inspections, enforcement, regulations, if they become sticky, foodborne illness, we confer with the Medical Director. Vital records collections, burst deaths, health certificates, they're operated under the Medical Director's purview, disease surveillance and control, any kind of outbreaks, rabies control, immunization programming, all done through the Medical Director's conference. Public health nursing and education, community and school outreach, emergency preparedness, and substance and harm reduction.
Specific to detention health services, other statutory requirement would be Title 11, 411, powers and duties. So this statute is states that the sheriff will take charge and keep the county jail and the prisoners within it. And, you know, that means that we have to care for the individuals within the facility. We also have to provide them a level of health care that is comparable to that which is provided within the community. Yes.
What is this constitutionally adequate health care? What does that mean? How does that define?
So that's defined as the health care that is comparable to that which is provided within the community.
Urgent care level type stuff?
Urgent and chronic care. So like urgent, urgent care for sure, but also chronic care, any sort of chronic disease has to be monitored and treated accordingly.
Diabetes or something?
Yep, diabetes, hypertension, cardiac issues, mental illness, all of those are chronic cares. And let's see here, additional regulations that we have at the jail and also throughout the state are DEA licensing. So the DEA registration is what links the responsible physician to the medication which is provided within our facility. And the physician that is holding that DEA license and that DEA number takes on the liability. So any misuse of that license can lead to DEA action, fines, or revocation of that number.
Sure.
Specifically, this affects our medications for opioid use disorder program. So we have a pretty robust MOUD program. And the majority of these medications are being ordered under the Medical Director's DEA license. I would also like to specifically address needs and requirements as far as like specifically providing medical direction to correctional healthcare department. It's very important for us to have institutional knowledge, not just our institution, but just as a correctional healthcare institution.
Methadone, what you're talking about?
Methadone is provided, is provided to by a community provider, but.
As far as prescription counter drug stuff, you're talking about Narcan? I mean, what are you talking about with?
So with our MOUD program, the medications for opioid use disorder, we're providing Suboxone.
Is that like the new?
It's just like methadone. It's.
The new synthetic?
It's just like methadone helps with the craving.
Does it have a, an effect kind of like Anabuse does for alcohol? Or if you take opioids, makes you really sick while you're taking it? Or is it just, you know? So you could, you could stack opioids on top of it?
You could. It does increase the risks for overdose, but the.
They need to invent an Anabuse-type opioid.
They do have, they do have a few. They're extremely pricey.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, they're extremely pricey, but they're wonderful. They're not on the formulary. Yep. Definitely not on the formulary.
When I, when I was in New York, I did some paramedic work up there while I was in the Army. Hard to explain, but anyways, a pilot program we were doing, we were running with the New York Fire Department. They had a program there that was rapid detox where they would, they would take these people on opioids and they would put them under anesthesia. And then they would induce through Narcan-like type drugs, this heavy cascade that would knock all of the opioids off the opioid receptors on their cell and crash these people into these rapid withdrawals. But they would be under anesthesia.
They still do that.
They still do that?
Yeah, it's private pay.
It's private?
It's private.
But it was very effective. But then, wiping out all the opioids in their system and then they would go through this severe, because look, a lot of the people, the hook of opioids, just like alcohol, is the constant reintroduction because of the dopamine your brain wants to keep happy. So when you start to go into withdrawals and you start shaking, run, go get more drink, alcohol, or you go shoot up and it goes away, right? So that is the unfortunate thing about addictive drugs. You're constantly stimulating the brain to do these things. So to do the rapid detox gets the unfortunate actual physical symptoms of withdrawal out of the, out of the picture. But then you got to get the psychological piece to keep the reintroduction of opioids or alcohol into the system. But it was very effective. I mean, I remember the docs that were doing it, they had like a 90% permanent success rate if the patient followed with, with, but, but that is not covered like by access or Medicare or Medicaid. You got to be kidding me.
However.
That's like the ultimate way to get people off drugs.
Methadone is still covered.
Methadone is just more opioids.
People die from it.
Yeah, it just, I just never understood the rationale. If you got a way that gets people off the drug, you know?
Does anybody know if methadone is a, like?
Schedule two, right? Schedule two.
You have to be an opioid treatment facility, an OTP, OTP in order to prescribe methadone. And Cochise County Jail is not. However, we have a partnership with a community provider who is. So we are able to continue the methadone. It's Community Medical Services, C M S.
Okay.
And so.
That's where the nurse practitioner works, or?
No. The nurse practitioner works for us.
Oh, she works directly for you guys? You mentioned C M S before. That's us.
We just did an MOU with C M S a couple of years ago. And so, but we work very closely with them because they are able to prescribe methadone.
Do they have to have somebody supervise that in the jail?
Um, well.
Or they give you authority under the MOU to do that?
Essentially, they give us authority over the.
To make sure they're not?
They're still seeing their C M S provider. We're doing virtual visits with this C M S provider. And then we're providing the methadone within this facility.
So I had a friend who had a back injury. And so he was on, on code, or something like that. And he wanted to get off of that. And so he got the like electrical stimulators up and down the spine, that got infected. So he had it all thinking out, wanted to get off, off the painkillers. And so he, he got on methadone to stop the cravings, but he killed himself by overdose. So is methadone not a painkiller? It's just a, or is it, is not a very good painkiller or what?
It is, it is essentially, and it can be used as a painkiller because it does.
It's the same.
It does provide, yeah, it does provide that numbing effect. And it does respond to the opioid pain receptors. And so it does have, it does have a bit of that. But you have to be super, super careful whenever you are using methadone, whenever you use any other kind of pain medication or any other kind of opiates. It just kind of cancels out the other pain medications. So if you have an individual who's been using opioid pain medication for years and years and years, they go into a methadone clinic because they want to get clean and they want to, you know, get on this nice medication for opioid use disorder. And, but they're still having cravings and they use that opiate pain medication in conjunction with the methadone.
They quit breathing.
They're not going to get the same effect that they did before. And so they're going to take more. And then they're going to take more. And so the risk of overdose is extremely higher.
Huge respiratory suppressant, makes them stop breathing. That's how they die.
For sure.
Or if you mix it with alcohol.
Yeah, synergistically.
Yeah. But we're of the night that the Cochise County Jail.
They don't access this and allow rapid detox.
There's a lot of monitoring that goes into it and it's very expensive. And so you.
Because of the anesthesia, it takes three days, three days to hospital.
Hospital day.
Yeah, yeah. It works so well.
And people don't usually die from withdrawal from the drug. They die from the symptoms of the withdrawal. And so, and that's what.
What symptoms you talking about? Oh, my God, you ever see anybody go through?
Severe dehydration.
Very bad.
Yep, there's something, severe dehydration and seizures. They can have all kinds of stuff, a lot.
Okay. That's why they do it in the hospital.
Yeah, they control the environment. Absolutely.
Methadone, or what's the other drug, what'd you say it was?
Suboxone.
Suboxone, just your, your goal is to taper.
Yes.
Them down over time to where you can taper them, eventually taper them off. That's, that's all.
10%.
But how often does it work?
I've seen, I've seen quite a few success stories. I have seen.
Is it like 20% of the time, 50% of the time?
I would lean closer to 20.
20%?
I would lean closer to that, that side of it. But the success cases are huge.
Not, man. I mean, that's when I was in New York, that was like, everybody was on methadone. Everybody was on methadone. And, and they were also still doing everything else. It was not, it was just another drug to most of these drug abusers, you know?
It's really tough. And I have a love-hate relationship with MOUD because it is, it's one of those necessary evils. But the way I look at it in Cochise County, as you know, Cochise County is very, very spread out. And there's only, there's more now, but two years ago, there was only one methadone clinic in all of Cochise County. And whenever people started taking methadone, you don't get to go in and take home like a week's or a month's worth of dosing. You have to go in every single morning and they're only open from 4:00 AM to like 11:00 AM. So we have people that are in this county that say they live in Bowie. And they're going to drive all the way down from Bowie to Sierra Vista once a day to, because they, they're that committed to their sobriety, that speaks volumes to me. Because I don't know that I could be that committed to, you know, quitting smoking or quitting drinking soda or anything, you know, that's a big commitment. And they have to put in a lot of work for it, so.
All right. So does the Medical Director have anything to do with like autopsies or anything like that?
So the Medical Director sits in and reviews, sits in on any of the mortality reviews that we do within.
Well, we have a coroner.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another contract.
Pima County.
Pima County does. So we have contracts for diligent burial and they transport them. The funeral homes transport from Cochise County to Pima County for autopsies.
If they have a suspicious death.
Yep.
Who does the autopsy?
Pima County's coroner.
Okay, so we have an I G A and a contract with them to fund it. But the Medical Director doesn't also do the coroner?
No. We do review the data regarding.
How about if we got a Medical Director that happened to be a pathologist? A what? A pathologist, a coroner, this guy that does Quincy menu, is there a stock? Quincy, we do, okay? I'm not going to have that, man. So that would be like two birds with one stone because you could have an M E and a coroner on the same thing. That would be like a bonus if we could find a like retired coroner that would, as a side get.
Did our current or former Medical Director ever show his face?
Yes, yes.
How frequently?
Every quarter physically comes down from Tucson.
Okay. Most of the time, from where Sharon explained to me is you and your staff write up nursing notes or care notes or whatever. And then they go into some system and then he goes online and just reviews all your notes on all the patients that you treat to make sure you're not doing something crazy or describing something you're not supposed to. Or you missed something or maybe, you know, how often does he or she call you back and say, hey, go back to this patient and check this or check that? Or is it just a check the box type process?
It's not super often that we get a call from Dr. McLaughlin saying, you know, like, go back and check in on this. It's definitely not super often.
Okay.
However, he, the charts that he would review would be, we do a peer review. So the nurses within my department will do a peer review for chart audits. And so we have a list of things that we need to check on each chart. And you're randomly assigned charts and you do that chart audit. And then if there's things that are missing, it's a quality improvement process that's internal. Dr. McLaughlin would review the chart notes for our provider that's in-house. And so, yeah. So that would be that quality process. Yes.
Okay, here I have many, many things from COVID era. And so one of the things that I'm wondering about is in terms of emergencies, and maybe you know it from, from the state statutes. What does it say about medical emergencies in state statutes versus what says in the Constitution, which is that the legislature handles emergencies and provides for continuity of government? And so what I'm, what I'm getting at is overreach by, by the, the Medical Director or, or anybody else?
Yeah, so in the county, the Medical Director gives guidance. It really is the Board that makes the decision whether or not to call an emergency. And at the state level, it's the Governor and A D H S. The Arizona Department of Health Services confers with the Governor who can dictate a state emergency. But at the county level, it's the Board.
So org chart wise, technically, the Medical Director works for you or works for us?
Well, it's a contract. So they don't have, they don't have a reporting.
True, true though, so it would be through your department?
Right.
So you have technically the oversight for that position?
Right, I would give guidance to the Board, but at the end of the day, the Board makes the decision on whether the county is in a state of emergency.
So what is your impression, if you know, of the Governor's authority to declare an emergency in a pandemic as opposed to the legislature who may be out of session? And continuity of government? Because what I think is that the legislature has the continuity of government responsibility during an emergency. That's what I think. I'm not looking at the Constitution right now. I don't think the Governor has that constitutional authority. What do you think?
I'd have to look at the statutes off the top of my head. I don't, I'd want to make an informed decision.
Sorry, I think the legislature has tried to address that, you know, clear lines of authority.
They gave the Governor a 30-day, a 30-day window now. And then after 30 days, for any declaration of emergency, they have to get permission from the legislature.
Got it.
And it's funny if you care to write that down or give that to me.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, so the Governor still has, has emergency executive authority. Obviously, if there's like a nuclear bomb goes off somewhere or there's a terrorist attack or.
Say that again?
So the Governor has emergency authority, executive authority for declaring emergencies and implementing certain things through the National Guard, through Health Directors. They have 30 days that the, the report was, there was no time limit. The Governor could say, I'm declaring an emergency and here's what we're going to go do. Now the legislature has limited that executive authority to 30 days. That would be what they determined was sufficient time to mitigate the emergency. Now it is a chronic, medical terminology, I guess, what would be the legal term, a sustained situation that is not an emergency. So there it defers back to the legislature. So if you were to go back to the COVID thing, so if you say like in April of 2020, the Governor declares an emergency and wants to shut down all the gyms, the restaurants, everything else, everybody's got to wear masks. He or she can get away with that for 30 days. And at the end of 30 days, that order would be moot if it wasn't reapproved by the legislature. And then so that would not happen again, what happened in 2020.
So the, because of that, the, the legislature becomes automatically in session to address that?
Yes, they would have to, the Governor would have to bring them in to give them authority to extend beyond the 30 days. Governor's got 30 days to implement whatever they want to do, lockdowns or whatever. Now the legislature can call themselves in session for the two-thirds vote if they want to do that. I mean, the Speaker and the Senate President can call them in and then they can, they can vote the body into a special session.
Are you aware of that ever happening?
No, it is not a common occurrence. 99% of the time, the Governor calls the legislature in a special session. Governor has the authority to do that.
I understand.
And they will likely do that because the way they set it up was if they issue an order, if, if the date starts the day they issue and declare an emergency. So that starts the clock. And then if they implement any orders, executive orders, those orders will expire 30 days to that date. So they would have to bring the legislature in in order to extend those.
Okay.
So they would have to call.
I'm not, I don't know the details of that. Do you, do you know the details of that?
It has not been exercised yet because this was because of COVID, they implemented these changes because of COVID. Because originally Governor Ducey was able to just do whatever he wanted for as long as he want. And of course, as you point out, the legislature got a little uptight about that because they didn't get any authority from, I mean, he was just imposing all this federal.
I don't think he has the authority. Well, I mean, not, not in the Constitution. So if you've got, if you've got some law says the Governor has this authority, but the Constitution doesn't, then you got, you got that issue.
During an emergency, though, the Governor, like the President, has emergency powers.
Supervisors?
Yes.
I know that we have a work session coming up on this, or at least we talked about a COVID future planning. So Dan DeShawn handles emergency planning and I've been working with him on an emergency, updating our overall manual. And I understand that we were going to do something with that. And so I think we're missing a piece.
Yeah, there's, there's been, clearly because of what happened, a lot of heartburn, the way that went down. And actually, what they should have did was they should have opened more gyms and allow people to go exercise because the biggest mortality factor in COVID was morbid obesity. And the last thing they should have did was shut the gyms down. They should have said, everybody go into the gym and shed 20 pounds and it'll be less likely to have issues. But that was hindsight, nobody knew what was going on, right? We're a Monday morning quarterback and that's what the legislature, I think rightfully did after they Monday morning quarterbacked, they said, okay, we can't let the Governor go on forever issuing executive orders and directives that may be counter to the Constitution. And we can't let the governor go on forever issuing executive orders and directives that may be counter to the constitution, counter to the. What the the majority of the people in the state want. And they're, you know, you could get a cowboy in there doing some crazy stuff. Let's just give him. Thirty days to extend in. And they actually restricted some of the things that the governor could do. On executive order too. I I can't remember exactly. There were several things that were like, I think permanently shutting down stuff was put in there. I forgot. There's something in there about that. Not, he has to get legislative permission to do that. But if he wants to do. Quarantines or something like that. Say there's a measles outbreak in Eloy. And it's just running rampant. He could, he could do. Quarantines, he could do stuff like that, he or she, depending on who's governor.
There's a case, right? There's one single case of measles, yes, that I sent.
But there there's CDC protocols for measles. I didn't, that was a bad example because you automatically quarantine people with measles anyways. But I mean. There's something I can't, I don't have it in my head, the exact what the legislative fix was. But there was a significant legislative fix that occurred. After COVID. The the to limit those powers. Yeah. I have a comment on needle exchanges and I talked to a guy who's a former addict and runs a. Uh, addict group. And he was, his opinion was the needle exchange program was bad because it made. Relapse easier. Yeah, but like we talked the other day about the sharps issue, right? That's, there's a plus and a minus there. Do you want these guys throwing their stuff in the garbage and having some poor garbage guy pick it up and get stuck? Or or sharing needles? Or sharing needles, right. So there's there's a health side to it. And I'm biased on this because I got stuck and I went on an HIV protocol for ninety days because I got stuck by a guy. Uh. Long story. But anyways, that sucked. It was actually the the protocols they put me on made me really sick. And but I had to do it so I didn't get AIDS, right? So you didn't want to, this was also during the, when AIDS was still. Rocking and bopping, right? So I had ninety days to take this up and it sucked. I'll tell you right now. You do not want to get stuck by a needle. And then psychologically, what's going through your head? Am I gonna get AIDS, right? Which to me was. Right, I'd rather get shot with a bullet than than a needle, to be honest, especially in a very target rich HIV environment, which is where I was at the time. So it was a very scary period. So getting needles off the street to me is a big deal to me because again, I'm biased. So. Anything that gets sharps off the street and dispose of properly, I think is a good. Needle exchanges. The the encouraging them to go out and use more, that's the downside of that. But it's getting the sharps off the street and it's reducing the. I think the health effects of people sharing needles and then throwing them somewhere, it'd be easier to. Say, hey, you want a free needle? Give it your, give me your old needle, I'll give you a new one. But yeah, that I get it. I agree that. On that side of the equation, that does have a negative effect because you are encouraging the guy to go get get more. But. At the same time, you're getting rid of something that could be a health hazard off the street and disposing of a property. So there's a two side. It is not an easy issue. It is not an easy issue. And as far as needle exchange programs, there's a zillion other variables based on which locale is being this. And what, you know, with with what treatment options and so. Yeah, but back back to this, I as uh as far as the the DEA stuff goes, this is just for. All of the controlled substances or just for all pharmaceuticals?
In general.
So for for the formulary that you guys operate under and your people operate under because you do. Health clinics and and stuff, right? So that doctor that we're contracting with would be in charge of defining that formulary? They they have the ability to add or subtract from that based on their DEA license or?
Committee review. So we all.
Committee?
Yeah, we all put in input in annual review.
Doctor have the authority because it's their DEA license, right?
Well, ultimately, they're signing off on it.
I mean, if I'm the doctor. And I say, well, I don't want you guys being able to prescribe this drug because I don't like this drug. And I don't want you to prescribe it. I mean, he could do that, right?
As long as it's not violating statutory requirements and regulations.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know what those are.
If they wanna switch out one particular drug for another, or sometimes what happens is there are shortages. Um, there were some antibiotics shortages and our medical director made the decision what antibiotic we were gonna switch to. During the time of shortage. Um, that happens intermittently. Um, so not only the schedule two, but we order all the vaccines underneath their their license.
Stock medication.
Yes, like medication for chronic illnesses. So if somebody comes off the street, we're not, they're not going days without getting there.
So back, not to drag COVID back into it, back to COVID. So you got a medical director now. CDC puts out a guideline that everybody under eighteen needs a COVID shot. Everybody over sixty needs a COVID shot. Does he have the authority to deviate from that?
Well, they would educate the public under what the CDC's um. Uh, recommendations are, but ultimately, the public has a decision as.
There's a guy in the jail. Say you got an inmate gets COVID and that. Doctor wants to use, uh, what was the, what was the Joe Rogan? Uh, ivermectin. So he wants to, say he doesn't want to go with the, he wants to use ivermectin or he wants to use, uh, what was the other? Other uh. Antibody. I gave blood for it.
Starts with an R.
I can't remember where it was because I remember I got COVID early. I was, I was Cochise County case number, I think eighty two. I'm not kidding. I got the letter still somewhere. I saved it. Um, but. I was going back into Tucson donating blood for ninety days afterwards because I had a real high. Antibody antigen count that they used my blood to help somebody that was in bad shape. There was a, they converted it to something else. Yeah, plasma. It was plasma, yeah. So that was, but they boosted their antibodies with my antibodies, right? So that was kind of a controversial thing for a while there too, right? They weren't, they weren't letting everybody get them as whatnot. But say our doctor wants to go do that, right? So does he or she have the authority to do that? Say they don't want to do vaccines. Say they don't want to do.
Specific to the jail, that would not be allowable.
Because it's a statutory.
Vaccine was a statutory from.
No, the Department of Health.
From the state. So if the state says you have to give everybody in the jail COVID vaccine, whether they like it or not.
Vaccine program, immunization program. At the end of the day, people can choose whether or not.
They don't want it?
So people have the right to turn that down.
Right. And then and a lot of the vaccines are privatized, right? So you can go to Walgreens or CVS just like.
Yeah.
But it's.
Well, like now, they're still, they're still recommending people over sixty get a COVID vac. I just, when I called Safeway. The other day to renew a pharmacy, it says, oh, you, the guidelines are that anybody over sixty five should get a COVID shot every four to six months. I'm like, what? That's like nuts, right? So they're still doing that, you know? I mean, does our medical director get to say? No.
We get to provide informed consent. We get to, we get to inform the patients.
Does the medical director help implement that policy, help write that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. They helped develop the policies, yes.
I just have a few more things.
Yeah, yeah.
Just respecting everybody's time. Um. Whenever we think about a medical director who is providing care to individuals that are in a correctional facility. Um, institutional knowledge of work and experience of working in a correction facility is very, very important. Um, because it is a very specialized area. One of the things that we don't, it's a hidden cost and it's. You know, like it's not, I guess, common knowledge is that in order to work in a correctional facility. And provide care and specifically medical direction oversight, you have to have med mal um. Med malpractice insurance that covers you to work within a detention facility.
That's additional malpractice that they would have to go get?
It is.
And are they on the hook for that or do we pay?
About, yeah, it's about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year annually.
Holy cow.
Exactly.
In in addition, in addition to their existing malpractice?
Yes.
That writer, that writer is fifty grand a year.
Just specifically to work.
Then no wonder they want a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Exactly. Because that doesn't even, I mean, that's only covering half of. You know, a half of that would be going to cover their med mal essentially. So they're just something to think about whenever we are moving forward.
Does ASAP cover that?
No, they do not. They used to. So this was years and years ago. They did. It's not something that they are covering now. It's not something that they're gonna cover.
What if we hired the guy, hired the guy as a county employee?
We still would not be able to do that.
You still wouldn't be able.
Our nurse practitioner, we have to get med mal insurance for her separately as well.
Yeah.
To work within the detention facility because it's within a detention facility.
You, we pay for it, though.
Yes, we pay for our providers.
Your nurse practitioner.
And hers is, I mean, that's significantly less because she's not a medical director. She's a nurse practitioner working within a correctional facility.
Were we paying this guy's?
No.
No.
He was paying his own.
He was paying his own.
Yeah.
And we, and how much was?
Forty thousand dollars.
So he was losing ten grand.
Absolutely.
He was, he had, he was the the medical director for X amount of county.
So you're, I mean, you're, I'm sure your pro like premium goes up with the amount of. Services that you're, or amount of jails that you're providing medical direction to.
Cause you're.
But that base rate is fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually.
Wow.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
I did not understand that.
Yeah, it's it's a huge, you know, that makes a big difference. It's a huge cost.
And so when we bring that contract to you, I would anticipate a cost increase over what we were previously saying.
Which is what, about a hundred eighty, you said?
It it could be anywhere. I would expect, depending on the negotiations with the contractor who we select, anywhere from a hundred to a hundred eighty.
And and this medical director was with us for how long?
For five years, five years. Yeah. Um, I think that the the majority, I think I've covered the majority of all the things that I wanted to make sure that I addressed. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that cost. And um, I mean, the. The jail is a very litigious environment. I think that everybody can agree and um. And just health in general is a litigious area. So uh, we want to make sure that we are making an informed decision whenever we are selecting the next medical director. And making the correct decision with someone who is experienced and knows all of the requirements that are needed.
What do you have to find in the doctor out there that knows jails?
There's quite a bit of.
Are there really?
Yeah. There's, I mean, there's, but there's certain companies that will do this. I mean, we could, I. I mean hypothetically, like if say Copper Queen wanted to, like they're, um, they have providers within our area. Or Canyon Vista, they have providers within our area. They could possibly provide uh, do a medical director thing. But there's also contract companies throughout the United States that provide this type of service to correctional facilities. Whether it's in the form of a doctor that comes on site and sees patients every day like we have um, in a county employee. Or as whether it's in the form that we've used previously with Dr. McLaughlin. It's just in typical direction.
So, so his services will end September first. Correct. And so what is your schedule to give your medical director? I mean, are you looking at people now or?
So the request for supplier qualifications is what's posted on our procurement site. And we've sent out um, information to people who have asked to be notified when we put that out. So people. Who are interested are being notified. Barb's put out word to the local hospitals and other regional providers. Uh, so. We're waiting for those to come in. I haven't seen if any have yet. And then by August twenty second is when it closes. And then we'll do a review with the scoring team of. Barb, Megan, the clinical services division director over at medical, over at the Department of Health. And our nurse practitioner. We'll all review those for the qualifications, make sure this person meets what they need. And then we'll bring it to the board. So I'm hoping early September board meeting, we will have one for you.
Oh, so we're gonna have a gap?
We're hoping to not have a gap, but there, there is a possibility that we will have a gap.
And what what happens during that gap?
Our hope is that we will be able to do a a like extension with.
For the other guy?
With our current medical director. Um, I don't know that that's a possibility, but we definitely hope for that.
It's gonna happen then.
Yes, we do. It's, we're waiting for them. We may even do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can go without a gap. Okay, that's all I got. Uh, Miss Kummer, you got any other?
No, that's.
Mr. Crosby? I have lots and lots of added comments, but they can be. Okay, all right. Well, ladies, thanks so much. All right, well, oh, I gotta do the next meeting. Next meeting is gonna be this afternoon at one o'clock. To discuss. Oh, the publicity pamphlet for the jail is uh, this afternoon at one and possible executive session if necessary. So see you guys at one. We're adjourned.